And welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Regular Meeting for August 6, 2019. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And first I ask that all of you either turn off or mute your cellphones or other electronic devices. And trustee Swerke will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First order of business, Rob, would you like to check quorum for the upcoming meetings?
Certainly. For August 20th, I have trustee Wedner, trustee Dearborn, and trustee Kreip.
I might be here.
You might be here.
Okay.
Yeah, you're out, right? And Andy, you're out. Okay. Well, do you have a quorum?
Yay.
You're excited, I can tell. Then September 3rd and September 10th, those dates look okay to everybody?
The 10th, I'm at.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay. Item number four, public comment. This is the time of the evening where anybody who wishes to address the village council on any item that is not on the agenda, they're welcome to come up to the podium and share your thoughts with us. Again, this is for items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody wish to address council? Come on up.
My name is Leo Birow, obviously normally probably. I live in 195 Sheridan, and it will be project next to me on south, 191 Sheridan, which homeowner going cut bluff basically completely. It does some kind of art studio. It's only five, six feet from my property, and obviously he submit some drawings, no shoring, nothing done, and I'm very concerned about destruction of my property. And I build houses, you know probably about that. I build Lake Forest and Lake, I build Highland Park in Glencore, in Canaveral right now after projects. No one village allowed to cut bluff, which Winnetka does allow. Lake Forest, you can touch anything. Highland Park has 40-foot protection zone, you can even do pull. Canaveral has new one, 35 feet. Glencore has steep, slow regulation. Bluff was done by nature for a million years, and when you start cutting bluff, and it does affect property adjustment because you put shoring in one way to do it, but it's temporary solution. With time, it can move, it can distract, it have erosion. Why is the village never look for this? You got right now another project, 518 Sheridan, he taking a put in pull, it's great, but it's kind of strange why village never look what the Justin village is doing for this issue. Why Winnetka such exceptional village, which allowed make destruction of something was done by million years? I would like to look at this issue. Okay, please, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Birow. We'll take that under advisement. Would anybody else like to address council on any? Come on up, Ron.
I'm Ron White, live down Berkeley in Cherry. At the end of Cherry Street, there's a old blue house, stucco, it's been under renovation, but they seem to have stopped work. And I wondered if there's some comment that could be made about it. It's been, I think it's about a month since they've actually been working. It's only partially demolished. If someone in authority has some knowledge of what's going on, I and the neighbors would like to hear about it.
Sure. David, you want to go ahead and give an update on that property, please?
Yes. When the project originally started, it was going to be a major renovation project, and as they proceeded through with the project, they discovered that the framing of the house, in their opinion, needed to be removed, which changed the project from a renovation to a new home, new structure, which means they had to meet different FEMA standards in terms of constructing in the floodplain. So they are having to submit revised plans in order to demonstrate compliance with those regulations. We anticipate those plans coming in this week or next week, but we have been in contact with the property owner about what they need to do to come into compliance to construct the structure.
Great, thank you. Does that help, Ron? Anybody else like to address council? Seeing none, I will close public comment and we'll move on to reports. First is trustee reports. Penny, we'll start down with you. Ann?
Well, I did the Saturday farmer's market, and just one thing I heard from Rob, which is great, is that there are some wood benches on the median strip and chestnut cord, and I, we have gotten some input on those, that they look really bad, and with all the streetscape up, you know, couldn't we just do something, couldn't Public Works look at that one? The good news is that Public Works is going to sand them and make them look nice, so thank you.
Great. And thanks Steve, wherever he is.
He's lurking.
He's lurking somewhere. Bob?
No report.
John?
No report.
Andy?
No report.
Jack? Village attorney?
Just briefly, as was reported in the media, about a week ago, we received the first district appellate court's decision in the stormwater litigation that had been filed against the village challenging our stormwater fee and our utility. We had been granted summary judgment at the trial level. The appellate court upheld that decision across the board and affirmed the validity of the stormwater program, and specifically the stormwater fee, and specifically how it is calculated. So it was a good day at the appellate court for the village.
Can I just say thank you to Peter and Holland and 19, they really have done a great job. Litigating with residents is never something we want to do, but when we have to go down that path, it really pays to have good councils, thank you.
Agreed. Plus one for the good guys. Village manager?
No report this evening.
And village president, I have one item. I'd like to share with everyone an email that I received late last week, and I think it's kind of cool, and so I'll go ahead and just read this. Good morning. My name is Jane Singer. Back in the mid-1980s, I worked at Winnetka Chamber of Commerce, a truly wonderful job. When I resigned to take on a new position, I was blessed with not only a frame certificate of appreciation signed by chamber board members, but a most beautiful painting of village hall done by a local artist from Lake Forest. The painting has graced my walls wherever I have lived, but now it is time to see that it gets a good home, as neither my daughter nor son have any interest in it. I would hate to see it destroyed, so I'm hoping you would allow me to send it to you for your use at the town hall or historic museum, or perhaps someplace else in town. I have attached a picture, and if you are willing to accept this gift from me, I will need the correct address from which to ship it. Winnetka is truly a special town. I truly love my years there. My life is now in Largo, Florida, where all the old folks go to die, although I see more and more young people choosing the sun versus the snow life.
And the taxes.
I look forward to your response. Sincerely, Jane Singer. And just so everybody knows, I sent Jane an email and told her I'd love to take her up on it. It really is a beautiful painting, and we are hopefully going to find a place here in village hall to display it, and if Jane is back in town anytime soon, maybe we'll even have a little unveiling ceremony and a little party out in the hallway wherever we decide to put it up there. But a really nice gift from a previous resident, and one of the cool things that I get to experience sitting up here sometimes, so. So that's my report. You can tell it's humid because all my pages are sticking together. Okay, item six. Before we vote to establish the consent agenda, may I have a motion to remove item 8E from ordinances and resolutions and put it under the consent agenda? Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that moves over to the consent agenda. Now, does any trustee wish to remove an item on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the final form of the agenda?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Now on to the consent agenda. The village clerk will read the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Approval of the village council meeting minutes for July 9, 2019, special meeting, and July 16, 2019, regular meeting. Approval of the warrant list dated July 12 through August 1, 2019, in the amount of Resolution number R66, 2019, approving an agreement with Northern Divers USA for maintenance of the water plant's raw water intake for adoption. Resolution number R67, 2019, waiving the formal bidding process and approving a contract with Bowler Construction. Resolution number R68, 2019, design engineering services for Streetscape Phase 2 for adoption, and rejection of bids Bull Parkway Pump Station Project.
Great. Thanks, Rob. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by omnibus vote?
So moved.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Wedner?
Yes.
Trustee Lanfear?
Yes.
Trustee Swerke?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item eight, ordinances and resolution. Item 8A, resolution number R69, 2019, termination of 1 Winnetka Development Agreement and zoning and subdivision approvals, and this is up for adoption. As reported at our last council meeting, the 1 Winnetka Development is in default with, one, the guarantee security provision of the development agreement, and, two, the zoning and subdivision closing and recording requirements related to the Connie's property. The council directed the village attorney to prepare resolution R69, 2019, that is before us tonight. Adoption of the resolution would terminate the zoning and subdivision approvals and the development agreement, which would result in the return of the development parcels to their original underlying zoning classification. Tonight, village attorney Peter Friedman will review the termination resolution, and council will hear from the developer and the public. So the way this will work tonight is Peter will give his presentation, we'll then turn the microphone over to David and his crew. After that, we will ask for public comment, and then we'll bring it up here to the council for deliberation and possible action. So we'll turn it over to Peter to start things out, and Andy will have to recuse himself.
Yeah, still upstanding, so, thank you.
Sorry to see that.
Enjoy. Yeah.
As we reported at the July 16 council meeting, first, as the village president indicated, that development agreement required that the developer provide a third-party financial guarantee honored before November 20, 2018. As of today, the developer has not complied with this requirement specifically. Developer has not provided a fully executed guarantee of completion, which is exhibit Q to the development agreement, and the developer has not provided a certification from an independent auditor certifying that the third-party guarantor satisfies the financial standard set forth in the development agreement. Accordingly, the event of default under the development agreement still exists and has not been cured as of today's date. Second, the developer was required to close on the Connie's property and record the plat of subdivision absolutely no later than June 29, 2019, which was after the expiration of two by right automatic 90-day extensions granted to the developer under the controlling documents. As of today, neither the Connie's closing nor the subdivision recordation has taken place. The developer has reported in his July 29 letter that closing on the Connie's property will not occur for another nine or more weeks. Under all the zoning approvals, the developer's failure to meet the plat recordation deadline authorizes the village council to terminate the approvals. We also reported on the property maintenance issues and the complaint the village has filed against the 1 Winnetka property owners and others who have interests in the property relating to the condition of the property. The village has been in regular contact with the developer and his team, and the village inspected the property this past August 5. And key points to note here are as follows. First, there has been progress made at the property. There has been material reduction of combustibles throughout the buildings. All the alarm monitoring services have been restored to the buildings. There's still work to do on fire alarm modifications and related issues. There remain some significant issues and concerns regarding unauthorized access and trespassing into the vacant structures on the property. There is still bacterial growth and mold that remains present and a concern throughout most of the buildings, and some standing water remains as well. Chief Brokowski and David Schoen are here to answer any specific questions that may come up with regard to these issues. In light of all of those matters, at the July 16 meeting, the council directed us, as the village president indicated, to prepare resolution R69, 2019, which is on the agenda and included in the packets. The resolution would first repeal the zoning approvals for the project, specifically the plan development ordinance, the subdivision approval resolution, and the MAP amendment ordinance. Each of those approvals was explicitly conditioned on the identical requirements with regard to the Connie's closing and subdivision recordation requirement, and the developer agreed to each of those conditions. Second, the resolution relates to the termination of the development agreement. Section 13 of the development agreement actually says that the development agreement terminates automatically if the zoning approvals must terminate, and resolution R69, 2019, so declares. And I can answer any additional questions that the council may have.
Okay, does the council have any questions for Peter at this time?
Nope.
Seeing none, we'll turn the microphone over to the developer.
Village President Board, my name's Glenn Udell, I'm an attorney, one of the attorneys who represents the developer. I did appear before you at the last board meeting. I'm going to make some preparatory remarks, then I'm going to turn the floor over to David Trandell, who is the principal sponsor of the developer, and some other individuals that I'll introduce when I go through my remarks. First of all, I'd like to address an issue from the last board meeting. It was a little disconcerting to me that some of the trustees and some of the people in the audience seemed to be upset that Mr. Trandell wasn't here at the last meeting. And I think I'd like to make the record clear that I inquired as to whether or not the board wanted Mr. Trandell here at the last meeting to speak, to address any issues that might come up, and we were advised that, no, he would not be allowed to speak, albeit we were told he would not be allowed to speak because he didn't provide documents that were requested by village council within the requirement of them being in one week prior to the meeting, and that is why he was not allowed, or was told that he would not be allowed to speak at the meeting. But as far as why he wasn't here to address some of the concerns and issues that some of the trustees had, or even village residents had, it was because he was told that he would not be allowed to address those issues as a result of the fact that he didn't make timely submissions of documents to the board. So I just wanted to clear the record on that issue. My client's initial submission to the village was back in July of 2013. Ultimately, in October of 18, and then finally in December of 18, we received an amended development agreement from the village. My client spent over five years through an exhaustive entitlement process with this village board, with three advisory boards, in over 35 meetings in order to get this site entitled for the development that it's now entitled for. Between debt and equity, my client has invested over $30 million in this real estate in your village, which he is seeking to revitalize for the village, community, and himself. He did everything asked of him during the entitlement process. There was an initial underground parking plan. We went back and forth with that for two years. The village came back and said they wanted that change. With his architects and engineers, he had a change. He did everything that was asked. Now, some 10 months after we received the final development agreement, a few weeks ago, you were at this meeting, and you received a report from the village council, Peter Friedman, about certain defaults that exist under the development agreement. The factual defaults that exist under the development agreement are not denied, they exist. There were certain time triggers in that development agreement that were to be met, and there were certain things that were not done. Typically, the reason that your council negotiates and puts sunset provisions, time deadlines in development agreements, is that he doesn't want, or she doesn't want, the village to entitle land, and then to have a developer sit there in perpetuity and just do nothing. So it's there to make sure that something is being done. Things have been done with respect to this development that you will be made aware of tonight. Things definitely are being done that you will be made aware of tonight to show the progress that is going on with the development. There are things that happened between the time we received the final development agreement and the last board meeting that you are not aware of, that were out of my client's control, that prevented my client from complying with some of the timelines in the development agreement. One of those was the acquisition of the Connie's parcel. So the acquisition of the Connie's parcel was renegotiated and retraded. Council for Connie's passed away back in December when we were working on getting this done. We literally didn't get the contract with Connie's reinstated until 4:15 on the day of your last board meeting. I have provided Peter Friedman with a copy of the signed Sixth Amendment to the Connie's contract, which clearly indicates that we are under contract to acquire the Connie's parcel, and Connie's has the right, under that agreement, to purchase the swap parcel, the former Marani space where it's going to relocate its new pharmacy. One of the conditions in the development agreement was to record the plat by June 30, 2019. There was no way for us to meet that condition without being the fee simple owner of the Connie's parcel, because in order to record the plat, we had to own all the land. And since the Connie's deal was substantially renegotiated from the original deal where we were going to buy the Connie's parcel, do a leaseback to the existing pharmacy until the construction of the swap space was complete, to now, we can't get fee simple title to the parcel until the swap space is complete, so we couldn't record the plat. It's just something that we couldn't get done. We are funded and prepared to move forward with the remainder of the build-out of the swap space on the Connie's parcel. Jason DeJonger from Romspin, who was our lender, is here tonight to express his support and ratification of the fact that the funds are there, and that this is going to move forward. Mr. Trandell will address the issue about some of the things that he's done with the development and progress that has been made. With respect to exhibit Q, I also have here tonight Sean Spelman, who's the chief development officer from CA Ventures, which is the exhibit Q sponsor. CA Ventures has provided significant information to Peter Friedman within the last week. I've seen financials that have gone back and forth, they've asked to have those financials be kept confidential. CA is an international, multi-billion dollar real estate ownership management and development company that has the capacity to do this deal and are willing to come in as a sponsor on the exhibit Q and do this deal. Again, Jason DeJonger is here from Brian Cave, our lender. I also have here Skeet Walker, who was here to address any of the municipal code violations that Peter Friedman talked about, and progress that has or has not been made with respect to that. If after hearing everything this evening, the board still desires to revoke the development agreement in the underlying zoning, I feel that it is important to advise the board of the likely steps that would probably ensue and follow as a result of revoking the development agreement. I was here at the last meeting, and I heard what all of you had to say, and what I didn't hear anybody ask on the board is what would likely happen to this property? What's the likelihood of it being developed? What's the likelihood of getting rid of this eyesore in our downtown district so that it can be developed, that it can be a property that's producing to the economy in the village? So if the zoning is revoked, that will likely put the developer into a covenant default under his loan with his mortgage lender, who's represented by Jason here tonight. The lender will likely file a mortgage foreclosure lawsuit. That lawsuit will pend in the Cook County Circuit Court for probably two to three years, could be as many as four years. Cases don't move quickly, you don't have to rely, with what I'm telling you, you can ask your council about how these cases move through the Cook County Circuit Court. Once that's all sorted out, another developer is going to have to come in and go through the entitlement process all over again, albeit, I understand the village has revamped the entitlement process to make it somewhat of a more streamlined process, but for a project this big, it's still a Herculean task to come in and ask the advisory boards and the village boards to get this site re-entitled. The village also may, as Mr. Friedman has indicated, pursue claims under the Illinois Safe Property Act, perhaps get the buildings demolished, or to make sure that they're kept free, that they're not dangerous and hazardous, and they're safe to be operating it in the condition that they are. That process as well will take time to get through the Cook County Circuit Court. And all the while, this property is going to sit there as an eyesore in the community. That is not the best path to having something developed on this site and to get these properties back contributing to the economy in your village. The properties are currently vacant, they're taxed by the Cook County Assessor as vacant. Every one of you sitting up there tonight is paying more money in real estate tax to the village levy because this property is on a reduction due to vacancy. So getting the property up and running and developed is in everybody's best interest, and I would submit that as elected officials, it's your duty to think about what will happen, what are the consequences of simply taking this knee-jerk reaction at one board meeting and revoking what was in excess of a five-year process to get entitled? There are consequences to doing that, and I don't think the consequences are good. We've asked to come in and talk with the village in a non-public forum to explain what's going on so that we could educate everybody as to where we were at with the development. We were denied. "We don't want to talk," is what we were told. "If you want to come to the meeting, come to the meeting." At the end of the day, Mr. Trandell will explain to the village, along with the people that he has with him, the current state of the project. You can ask him whatever you'd like, he's prepared to answer all of your questions, he's got his development partner, CA Ventures, with him here tonight. But I strongly believe that this village board has a duty beyond just debating for 20 to 30 minutes, which it did during the last meeting, about just ripping the cord and revoking the entitlements on this site, as to the actions that will come, and for how long this site could sit blighted and an eyesore in your community before someone else comes along and has the economic zeal and desire to go through with re-entitling the site after the site has gone through litigation in the Cook County Circuit Court, which again, is an extremely long process. So, again, ask whatever you'd like, we're here. Any questions you want us to answer, we will answer to the extent we can. But I, again, would really implore you to think about the consequences of revoking the entitlements that were extremely difficult to get. There are other examples in other communities, not that far from here, of similar situations with similar sites that your own village council worked on, where sites like this sat blighted and eyesores for over a decade to work their way through the legal system before someone came around, ultimately was able to get rid of the litigation, get their arms around the site, and a very aggressive municip- arms around the site, and a very aggressive municipality finally said, "We need to get this done." So with that being said, I'll turn the floor over to David.
Mr. Udell, before you stand down there, I just wanted to address one issue.
Yes.
While I believe your characterization of the entitlement process was riddled with inaccuracies, the issue that you raised regarding the last meeting was just plain wrong. There was a clear message sent that if this development and the developer were to be placed on our agenda as a separate item, that they would only be given the opportunity to present to us if they provided us with the documents necessary in order for us to have a constructive conversation. Those documents were not provided, and at that point, your team was informed that we would be receiving a report from the village attorney and discussing the findings that he provided us with. At no time was Mr. Trandell or anybody from the team prohibited from coming and participating in that discussion. They merely weren't being allowed to present their story as a specific agenda item on our docket. So there was nothing to prevent David from coming then, and there was nothing preventing him from coming this evening. So I'm sorry, but that characterization was just so far off-base from what everybody on this council understood it to be. And we were all very surprised that David wasn't here. So somewhere between this building and where Springbank now resides, the message got distorted or wasn't heard correctly. Public comment during any agenda item, everyone in this community is allowed to speak, including David Trandell.
I understand. And I never said that we were prohibited from speaking. And I did acknowledge, when I made my remarks, I said we were told that we would not be allowed to present at the board meeting. And I prefaced it by saying it was because Mr. Trandell did not submit requested documents. I said that before I made the comment. I specifically acknowledged that Mr. Trandell did not submit the documents that the board had requested and therefore would not be allowed to make a presentation.
Well, the good news is we're all here now, so let's get on.
We are all here now.
Move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Glenn. My name is David Trandell, as you know, and I wanted to just touch on a couple points. I think Glenn did a good summary of some of the issues that we've been encountering. I mean, this is probably, I mean, you weren't here. This council's gone through a number of iterations since this project started. You know, the reality is, is development can be a very messy business. There are people who, from time to time, things change, the markets change. We did, I think we entered into a development agreement that Peter really authored that was in the best interest of residents of Oneaka. And I think we all have been doing our best to adhere to that agreement. But let's be clear. I mean, there are certain things that when we went into the document, really weren't thought of as issues that could hit us from the flank. And in doing so, we kind of walked down a path in good faith and in good dealing with our county's land seller. And listen, I am not here to chastise the opportunity in America for people to make money. I think Mark will do, he's going to do extremely well in the transaction, should we keep the entitlements afloat. But I mean, let's be clear. We went into this agreement with them years ago, years ago, to where we even changed the plan midstream because we finally got a contract with Mark Jacobs and Conys so we could actually clean up the whole block and not have to spend an extra million dollars shoring up a building that frankly is not worth a million dollars. So, you know, it's hard to look at life in a vacuum. We're sitting here with a document that's static. Unfortunately, the world that we live in is not static. Property taxes are up, we have a property in Arlington Heights, Cook County taxes up 230 percent, 230 percent, not 2 percent, 230 percent. That has a draconian effect on what you can do, what you can finance, how you can do things. You know, the time lapse from Conys, we're not bullies. You know, I'm a small business. I understand Mark's got to look out for his best interest. Was I happy that it took nine months? No. Did I verbally abuse him or threaten him? No. I sat with him. He assured me we'll get there. He didn't sign it on time. It's not like we didn't urge him every day. The record, if I showed you my phone calls, text messages, he finally said, "Listen, Dave, you got to quit calling me. Let the lawyers handle it." Well, you know, meanwhile, we've got to tick, 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 tick on things that are really out of our control. So I mean, you know, it'd be one thing if we were laying on the curb and saying, "Listen, we don't care. You know, let's see what happens. We just did this to flip it to the next guy." We have $30 million at risk. Thirty, not three, thirty. I mean, you know, this is not, this is no longer a lot of fun. We have to get in to get out. And as Glenn pointed out, you know, the next, you know, listen, I don't want to talk about the next guy. I want to just kind of get the past behind us. And we have our team here, and I think that kind of the simplest, cleanest way to go is just to say, "Okay, bygones be bygones." I mean, there's an old, I'm not a lawyer, but I mean, you know, no harm, no foul, you know, whatever the legal, the Latin phrase that is. But I mean, the people really harmed by the delay, I mean, yeah, it's a nuisance. It's not slightly, we're not happy about it. I didn't grow up to become a slumlord in Oneaka. It's not my goal. There are certain things out of our control, but the only people really harmed here, I mean, if you kind of look at it to peel back the onion, other than the inconvenience of looking at that site, it's us. It's frankly not the village. It's not the council. It's not the commissions. It's not the boards. I mean, it's us. And it's incumbent upon us to get it done. And so, you know, what we've been doing over the last nine months, beyond those negotiations with Conys, is really lining up a development team that has the firepower to see this through. And I think, you know, when Sean tells you where CA sits, listen, for the record, you know, CA is busy, okay? I mean, you know, we, I don't think it was, I don't think Exhibit Q was as focused on as it was getting Conys done. Because without Conys and without a plat, without an entitlement, you know, there's other things to, people have other things to focus on. It's the same reason why it's difficult to raise money when you don't have an effective plan. So we can sit here all day and say, "Well, why don't you have more money in the bank?" Well, it's because we don't have a fully entitled project. So just to be clear, the entitlements don't become effective till the plat's recorded. The plat can't be recorded till we own Conys, and Conys made this massive change to our deal midstream. No longer were we able to convey the property when we closed. They said, "Listen, we're not going to convey till we get CFO." Well, how do we control CFO? I mean, they're going to control the contractors. They're going to, the village is going to come in. That's, I mean, that could be nine weeks. That could be 10 weeks. People will be on vacation, you know. So listen, we had a well-intended document. I'm not here to slight the document because I know why they exist and we want to make sure people are not, you know, working in earnest to get things done. But the reality is, the whole deal of Conys changed. So if we're going to take a $100 million investment in downtown Oneaka, 104, hopefully, and say, throw it to the wind, after seven years of time, in how many hours these guys have worked on getting, I mean, you guys don't even see it all. I mean, this poor guy writes, it's like seven emails a day, in all, just for the benefit of trying to get something done in downtown. And I think to kind of throw that out to the wind because we're sitting here saying, "Oh, you know, you missed a date." No one wants to miss a date. I've got a lender who's not happy about me missing dates. I've got investors not happy about me missing dates. You know, I've got a whole, I've got a family not happy about missing dates. And, you know, it costs us. And so we're committed. And I just really impress upon, I mean, Oneaka is filled with beautiful places, great history, but one thing it's never been is knee-jerk. I mean, one thing, if you want to argue about anything, it might be a little pragmatic, but certainly not knee-jerk. So to take seven years and kind of toss it out the window because we can't bully a pharmacist into selling his property at the time we want him to, I don't think that was the intention of the document. The document was not intended to force Mark Jacobs to make a deal he's not happy with. He's a good man. He's got a small business. We have to, I mean, I only do what I can do. And I think it's going to be a really successful transaction for him. So I'll answer more specific questions. But in the meantime, I'd like to introduce Sean Spelman, who is the Chief Development Officer for CA Ventures. Give a little color on what they do and how they can get this done. Thank you.
Good evening. This is David Seb. My name is Sean Spelman, Chief Development Officer for CA Ventures. I'm going to give a quick high level as to who we are and why we're here, and hopefully talk about the go-forward strategy. A lot of history and backstories. CA Ventures is a, really, a developer and investment manager across three continents. We're active in North America, South America, and now Europe as of about a year ago. We're really active in all living spaces. So we're active in student housing, residential living, luxury living like this, this development is perceived to be and will be, and also seniors living. So we have three active verticals in the living space. We have about $10 billion of assets, 135 properties right now under ownership and management across the three different continents. Our current annual development pipeline is about $2 billion. So we do about 35 to 40 developments a year. Really good what we do, really good doing what we say we're going to do. Of our $2 billion annual pipeline, about half of those deals are brought to us by developers like David Trandell. So imagine the big world. A lot of people grab tigers by the tail and they have these great ideas and concepts and they need to find partners to come in and help invest, and then also, at times, help with the development process. I think the go-forward strategy on this, and the reason I'm here tonight, is that hopefully, CA Ventures had been through the backseat of the development and they were looking to move into the front seat of development. Going forward, I would be your likely conduit and person you're going to be conversing with on all development matters. Clearly, David is still part of the team, but CA has a pretty big investment in this community and the development to date, and want to continue to make good on the promises of the development agreement. Part of my, well, as Chief Development Officer, is really chief, I really like a chief risk officer, and our job as part of the investment committee is to make sure that we have all of our i's dotted and t's crossed before we really can sign up and get invested in deals. We look at all deals very similarly. We do this every week. And this one, up until literally the last month or so, didn't have a lot of i's dotted and t's crossed, and it wasn't really a full deal in our mind until we had the Conys piece put together. And so as of now, we recognize, and I don't know how or why you didn't have the full Exhibit Q documents that was sent over last week by our CFO, but if something wasn't signed or noted, I know they sent it before they went to Europe on Friday. So I'll double-checking whether it is, but I know it was supposed to be sent over late last week to you, so I apologize for you not having that. Know that we're committed to the development. The reason I'm here tonight is really just to really talk about a go-forward strategy and let you know how committed we are to the community. We have an entire division of our company that does developments like this, really phenomenally well-located suburban, urban markets that really recreate and redefine downtowns. We've done it all over the country. We've done it in Chicago and a number of communities. And this is as cool a development as you'll see with the loose and new range design, with a lot of the niceties that are involved in it. I think it's really something to be proud of. I think that it'd be well-received by everybody, from empty investors to folks who want to be in your urban downtowns as reconceived. So for us, David said this earlier, and I'll just repeat, the development's never linear. It's always a lot like making a sausage, and unfortunately, the timing of this just didn't work out within the confines of the development agreement. For me, the simple ask for us tonight, as we're trying to step into the development shoes, is that we just get a little bit of time from you guys, even if it's a short amount of time, you know, if it's 60 days, 90 days. We'll come every meeting and get up, this is where we're at. We're committed to making this work. We know there's a go-forward path. We see a light at the end of the tunnel right now, and we do think that we have, we do have our financing lined up. We have our debt partner here tonight. We have the equity partner. We also manage developments from a property management standpoint. So we have a phenomenally well-heeled in-house management team who would be involved with the marketing and leasing of this, and everyone's excited about the opportunity. So I do, I think, simply want to talk about a little bit more time for us, and whatever that feels good to you, we'll work with you. Clearly, we have some constraints with the Conys contract, so we know we won't be able to close in that until they have relocated, are prepared to do so. You know, as soon as they relocate, we're prepared to close and move forward, the balance of the development, and in the meantime, make sure things are safe for your community from a development standpoint. So with that, any questions you have for me, I'll be available.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jason DeJonger. As mentioned earlier, I'm a partner at Brian Cave Leyden-Paisner. And I represent Romspin Investment Corporation, which is the secured lender and the mortgage holder on the property that's in question. So most of the time, when I stand up and I talk about property, unfortunately, I'm talking about taking it back, or taking strong remedies with respect to borrowers, and really sort of shutting things down. That's what I do for a living, and most of the time, you don't want to ever see me. This evening, however, I'm here to really talk about this development from the lender's perspective, and the resources that we have put behind this particular transaction, and our strong desire to see this move forward. My client has already lent the borrowers here in excess of $11.5 million. We are prepared to put another $2.6 million into this deal to get the swap completed and to get this ready for redevelopment within the next 90-plus days. We are as concerned as this body is concerned, as this council is concerned, about things like timing. We're an economic unit. We're not here because we like David Trandell. We're here because we believe in the development, we believe in the real estate, and we believe in its value, and frankly, we believe its highest and best use, and our best chance of being repaid on our loan, is through a development of the deal. And we are very concerned, well, as Peter knows, I'm always concerned about the status of the property, because we've had a few conversations about that. But we're also concerned about this development agreement and the continuing support of this transaction and this development by this council. Without your support, without a development agreement, we're going to have to walk down the road that Mr. Udell described. I don't really want to do that. I don't want to come back before this August board or council and have to talk about things like receivers, about foreclosure, about having to take the property back. Because it is, A, a long process, and B, we might recover and we might own that piece of property out there, maybe somebody else will, but it is going to be a long process. And I'm not sure that benefits anyone in this particular room today. So my hope is that you will take Mr. Trandell and his team, and CA as well, at their word. I know they're spending a lot of time and effort on trying to get this transaction done. I know that because I'm on the phone literally with them every day, telling them to move faster. I've spent my own fair bit of time with Mr. Jacobs' counsel. I know they are very much on board with getting this transaction closed. It was a requirement from their perspective that we, as the lender, be on board with it, that we were prepared to finance it. And I can tell this group that we are very prepared to finance it. As you know, in the packet that I believe you received, you saw a commitment from my client to put the money in. And we would prefer this to move a lot faster, but we also recognize that there are a variety of different parties that are involved, and there are a lot of different things that need to be done in order for it to move forward. I don't want to talk a lot about gloom and doom because I'm hopeful that this council and this village will allow Mr. Trandell, CA Development, and Conys to finish the thing up. But I don't think it's a pretty picture, and at least, if you all were to pull the ordinance. I don't think it's a pretty picture. And I can tell you that my client will not fund the swap if there's no more development agreement, for obvious reasons. So hopefully, you all will look at the deal in total. I know there's a lot of history here. I don't have as much history, and so I'm sort of looking at it purely from the economic perspective. But I can understand when a group like But I can understand when a group like this has been dealing with someone that, there's been ebbs and flows in the relationship, I am hopeful that with this group being here supporting Mr. Trandell, that you realize that it's not just Mr. Trandell that's trying to get this done. And so perhaps you'll put a little more faith in us. I don't expect you to give us a long leash, but I'd at least appreciate a little bit of a, excuse me, a little bit of a leash, so that we can get this done, and we can get this development moving in the right direction, and frankly, that we can preserve my client's economic interest. And I would frankly be remiss, I do have a few partners that are residents here in Winnetka, and they also asked if I could ask for lower property taxes. I'm not guessing that's not possible, but I appreciate again the opportunity to speak. If you have any questions for me, on behalf of my client, I'm here to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Mark Jacobs, who I believe is in the room. Mark? Yeah, come on up. So Mark is, he is a partner, but he's one of the owners and has really been the voice that we've been dealing with with respect to the Connie's transaction. When we were at the last meeting, I indicated to the board that we had, in fact, signed a Sixth Amendment on that day. Some of the people from the community stepped up and said, "We don't believe you. We don't think you have it. We know Mr. Jacobs doesn't want to move forward with this." Simply not the case, so we felt it would be a good idea to have Mr. Jacobs here so that he could address the board, to let you know that we are under contract, and he does want to move forward with this transaction.
Yes, there's a contract.
Could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm Mark Jacobs, owner of Connie's Pharmacy, 736 Elm. And we did enter a contract, and it's been 10 years going back and forth with this whole project, and it's, we kind of want to have some kind of closure and move across the street at this point, and whatever the board decides, we just want to know sooner rather than later what the decision's going to be, because we've been in limbo for quite a long time.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay. So I really think that's it for people that we have to present. We did, we did provide some documentary exhibits to Peter Friedman. Peter, I thought you had been given an Exhibit Q from CA. If you hadn't, again, the email traffic that I saw, saw financials going back and forth. But again, they're here today, and they're willing to do it. That one document in and of itself does not take us out of default under the development agreement, because obviously, we need to record the play out, but they are here today and prepared to do that. I would also just like to throw something out to the board as an idea, perhaps, that, you know, if you heard what we had to say here tonight, and hopefully are inclined not to terminate the development agreement, the developer would be willing to come back in as frequently as every board meeting or every other board meeting to provide the board with an update or status as to what has gone on, what is going on with the project, as so to speak a condition to not voting and terminating the rights under the development agreement. So I think there could be discussion about inserting parameters to keep a short leash on what we're saying that we are willing and can do to make sure this is not something that goes on in perpetuity, whereby you could have us agree to come in and provide you, again, whether it's orally, by the microphone, or providing written updates or status, however the board sees fit, that they would want updates or statuses done, we would be willing to obviously go along with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this point, I will open up the microphone for public comment. Before we start, as I mentioned in the last meeting, the council is not relitigating the project with respect to whether you like it or not as proposed. We aren't going to talk about how pretty the building is, how ugly the building is, how stupid the building is, how overpriced the building is. This council is dealing with several defaults under a development agreement, and that is the decision that we're trying to wrestle with at this point. So with that in mind, I'd like to make sure that we keep the comments civil, and we keep them to the matter at hand, and that, you know, there's no room in this room for personal attacks, or personal criticisms, or things of that nature. We're really here to try to make some very difficult decisions, and hopefully do the best we can for this community, and you can help us in that by providing us with comments that give us the insight we need to make a good decision. So with that said, I'd like to start over in this corner, and we'll work around the outside of the room first, and then we'll come to the seated members of the community. Anybody in the back here like to approach the microphone? Coming across, coming across. I'm to the middle now. Anybody here? Over in the corner? Over here? Anybody along this wall here like to speak? Up, come on up. Hello, Denny.
How are you?
Good, how you doing?
Hey, this is Sam. I've been here before. Denny Niles, I live on Spruce.
On the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. I didn't see it. I'm old.
Denny Niles, I've lived in Winnetka for 46 years, been in the real estate business here for 46 years, never had a complaint filed against me or my firm. So that's very good in this part of the country, believe me. But my reason for being here is that I've watched that property for so long. I live on Spruce, and I do a lot of walking, and we just, you know, everybody kept thinking that something was going to happen to it. And when I found, when I saw David and got to know David, and he told me what his plan was, I said, "I'm in." I said, "Not to sell it for you, but it'll help my tax situation and help my business." I had a $2 million client come into town, walked around downtown Winnetka, spent two hours, and came back and said, "We just bought a house from Omet, an open house," because we think that you guys are going bankrupt. And that's, you know, that's not me talking, that's somebody, a real live client. And I mean, all you people up here that I appreciate so much, because you've represented all of us, and I don't think you get enough thanks for that to begin with. But my reason for being here is because I want this, I want this to be on the same plane that it should be on. We're dealing with people here. We're dealing with something that I still believe could be great for all of us. And right now, what I'm seeing is that we've taken it a little bit too far personally, I think, and I would like to see all of you rethink this one more time and think, this is a building that there are a ton of people that want to live in, and we're not affecting anybody's sunsets, we're not affecting Haley School for the Blind, you know, and they've tried to do everything they could to bend over to do this. And again, all I'm hoping for is that you guys take another look at it, the timing, if you don't have documents signed by somebody else that you need to fulfill your obligation, you've got a problem. And for that last meeting that was here, that I called to see if there was anything on the docket for one Winnetka, and they told me there was nothing on the docket for that last meeting you had. So, or I would have been here, because you know I've been at every meeting. So rather than waste more of your time, just give it some thought and think about it as a real, everybody in this community is going to benefit from this getting done. And in the end, I think everybody would be proud to have that building built. Louis Legerange is an incredible architect, and I, I mean, I grew up building houses, and I've built over 150 of them, and there's nothing wrong with that building. So anyway, think about it long and hard, or not too long. And let's see what we can get done here.
Thank you, Denny.
Because if you guys all get together and get this done, everybody in this room benefits. So think of it that way. So take it personally and benefit.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Moving back along the back row, over the corner, anybody back there? Coming up this side? Anybody on the, my right, your left side of the room? Okay, we'll come back to the middle, we'll work on this side first. Anybody in the first row like to speak to council on this? Moving second row. Anybody in the second row like to address council on this item? No one. Back to row three, Louise.
I'm here tonight as the chairperson of the Hadley Institute for the Blind and Visually Impaired. In the original amended agreement dated October 16, 2018, the developer agreed to be responsible for any damage to the Hadley Institute's structure at 700 Elm Street. The responsibility of the developer was to photograph the interior and exterior of the Hadley Building and provide monitors to be installed prior to the demolition of the One Winnetka various buildings. Hadley has just finished a complete gutting of the interior and rebuild of 700 Elm, and numerous improvements of the exterior of the building. Anticipating the demo of concrete structures which encompass most of the One Winnetka property, we are concerned as to damage to our building. Hadley, because of the close proximity of the One Winnetka construction, we are asking the village to ensure that this protection continues in any new version of the original agreement. Thank you.
Thanks, Louise. Going down the third row, anybody else like to come on up? Come on up, Rob.
Rob Apitoff, 730 Artsley Road, Winnetka. Before, I have a few comments, I'll try to make them very brief. There were a couple of comments said by the developer's team that were, kind of struck me as odd. The first one is that this was some type of knee-jerk reaction, said by two different people. This is about as far from a knee-jerk reaction that I've ever seen in any type of transaction like this. It's almost insulting to the trustees that have put this much time into this, as well as the village of Winnetka and the residents. This is far from a knee-jerk reaction, and I think that is exactly the type of tactic that is very frustrating for us to see as the community. We want to thank you for your time and effort that you put into this. Also, the priority that we need, somehow there's a short leash, or we need a longer leash, this is about the longest leash I've ever seen in any type of development. So I just wanted to talk about those things first before I got on my comments. I really do hate to see anybody, people, friends, acquaintances, get into a situation like this one. It's not fair, and I don't question any of the intentions to try and build a positive development for our community. Unfortunately, the beginning economics of this project put it behind the eight ball from the start, and when you're faced with trying to force a development to fit the kind of out-of-sourced economics that you got into, you wind up where we are now. Round after round of re-trades with the village, the height of the building, I'm not criticizing the height, I'm just saying, these are the special treatments that made this thing so long. Missing deadlines, building disrepair, changing the parking again and again, looking for additional concessions from the village, the Hadley parking lot, additional units now, less parking now, it's just the re-trades just keep coming, and we're starting to go negotiating against ourselves, which is just not good for this community. It really has, as years have gone by, we witnessed other developments by experienced developers in other parts of the country, like Rick Caruso, people that have real experience in developing land like this and working with communities like ours that are special. They not only fit into the community architecture and scale, they've added and revitalized the community, and it is, you have development after development they have put together, and you can see it, and we have a blueprint from which to go if we pull the plug on this If we really look, is truly the best thing for the Winnetka community, it's long past time to end the project and get a fresh start for this village to move on and not have to deal with this and the re-trades for years to come and the potential mess that we already are in. I think it has to be a clean start. We have taken a long time and a hard look at this. You guys have done your homework, you've protected the village, and we thank you for that. It's time to end it.
Thank you, Rob. Finishing up in the third row back there, now somebody wants to jump in from the side again. Come on up.
I live at 120 Woodley Road, and I am a lender to the project, so you understand I have vested interests, and I would be an owner of one of the condos should the project go forward. I'm prompted by the comments here that, and I was thinking that, who was it that said, "We are going to hang together, or we most assuredly will hang separately." I don't think there's any purpose sense value at all in looking back and saying, "Well, we've made all these mistakes." Mistakes have been made, it's over six years, you're frustrated, they're frustrated, the community's frustrated. I can tell you from my point of view, I'm very frustrated, but it is what it is. And should you pull the plug at this point in time, okay, I don't know if bankruptcy is the option, but the developer still owns the property, and we then are at a loggerheads, okay? Now what happens? Not bankruptcy necessarily, maybe something else, but it goes on, and it goes on, and it goes on, and sooner or later, there'll be another developer, maybe three years, five years down the road. We don't, as a community, you don't, as a board, and they don't have any choice but to go forward and make the best of where we are today. We've learned a lot, there've been a lot of mistakes made, and we should make those in the future, and this whole thing should collapse and move much more quickly in the future, but it's got to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Coming back here, finishing up the third row, Rob, Paul, go to the fourth row. Come on up.
George Walper, 870 Prospect. I'm shocked by a number of things. I did speak at the last board meeting, and I'll go to the bottom line. I would strongly encourage you to have perspective of the following, which is, I look at the flag and 150-year celebration of Winnetka this year, we can cut this out for five or six more years. I'm aware and becoming more educated about what the process will be if you pull the plug on this development. That's tough, but I think we can suck it up for a small percentage of 150 years, and I would strongly encourage you to stop this project and move forward with whatever the outcome is. Secondly, I'm also surprised, and I read some of the material for this meeting, and one of the things from the developer was a request, maybe too strong a word, a suggestion that because of the economic change, he would like to put more units there and reduce the underground parking. I'm shocked by the fact that that hasn't been discussed by the developer. That would suggest to me that he's asking for a whole new project. I think that we can tolerate, as a community, putting this thing in the stop mode if he wants to redevelop his plan and resubmit everything. I don't think five years is that bad, given what we've had. I think in 150 years, it's not a very long percentage or a high percentage, and I would encourage you to have the backbone to stop this project. Thanks.
Thanks, George. Come on up. Hi, Brian.
Brian Van Cleve, 1047 Elm. I was here last week, and frankly, I didn't hear anything tonight that makes me any more comfortable with this plan, and I think that the village would be better served to terminate this agreement, as it is suggested, and move forward with whatever steps come ahead of us. Sure, it could take a lot longer time, but I'd hate to get into this project and be in the middle of it, and then have a half-built building and potentially suffer the consequences at that point. I just don't think it's been a good process in terms of the information that's been required, and I think the village has done everything they can to allow enough time, and a contract is a contract, and I would recommend that you vote to terminate the development agreement tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Finishing up that row, anybody else back there? This is where I lose perspective. One of these days, I'll know how many rows we have, and it'll make it a little One of these days I'll know how many rows we have, that'll make it a little bit easier. The next row, row six.
Wallagreeno, 500 Maple Street. On the one hand, the developer complains that it has taken six years to get this thing off the ground, and then in the next breath he says, "But I still need more time." They say, let's, by gones be bygones, I suggest fool you once, shame on him, fool you twice, fool you three times, shame on you. You've given him everything he has wanted, more than once, he's come to you with plans he said were final plans that he could live with, you approved them, and then he said, "Well, I need to make these changes." You approved those, and then he said, "I need to make these changes." And now apparently he's back with more changes, according to his letter, which he didn't even mention to give the public a chance to comment on those. I trust you folks will ask him some questions, but not get sucked into, "Okay, let's have another three months of hearings on his revised plans." You've all heard about the frog dropped into the pot of boiling water, and it jumps out, but if you put him in cool water and just gradually heat it, the frog just sits there. That's what's happening with this project. Things keep changing, keep changing, keep changing, and pretty soon we have a project that nobody assumed we'd be living with. So like the others have suggested, the sooner that you terminate this agreement, the sooner you can begin with new project with a new developer that we can trust. Thank you.
Thanks, Wally. Nice haircut, by the way. Wally and I get our hair cut at the same place, so. Anybody else in Wally's row back there? Come on up. Frank?
Mr. President, Council, neighbors, my name is Frank Petrick. I live at 711 Oak, the adjacent property to the development on Lincoln Avenue. The first comment I want to make was, a number of us were here at the last meeting, and I stood up and expressed concern by the residents in the adjacent property building about safety, and safety was one of the considerations that our village attorney outlined when he listed the violations in that building. And I believe among the violations included, the electricity and the utilities were closed down, the building wasn't secured, and I spoke about having seen three kids trespassing on the roof of that building, and discussed that some time ago with the council, and living next door, I continue to be concerned about it, as do our neighbors in the 711 Oak building. And I want to read from tonight's agenda packet, which is the July 29th, 2019 correspondence to Mr. Friedman from the developer. I'm referencing page 96 of the agenda packet, under the, "In summary, with detailed evidence to follow in the upcoming days." And again, I remind you all, this is dated July 29th, sub-paragraph two. "The buildings at the property will have been brought into code compliance with safe, non-dangerous, and hazardous-free conditions." So August 1st is a couple of days later, and I'm out for a walk, and I walk past the Marion Michael Building, and here's some broken glass. So I walk from Lincoln over to the building, and I see some kids, hear some kids' voices. And it just so happened I had my iPhone with me, and I took a photograph of an adolescent kid literally entering the Fell Building at the below-grade level. Now, you may or may not remember, but one of my comments about the attractive nuisance of that building is, "How long do we have to wait before some child is injured?" Nobody was injured that day, but I did call 911. For the first time in the 40 years that my wife and I have been living in Winnetka, I called 911. And I'm pleased to say that Winnetka Police Department arrives within about three minutes. Of course, when I was talking to the officer, and she asked me if the kids were still in the building, I said, "Well, let me go and check." And I said, "No, there they go." And so these three kids are taking off. Being young kids, they, of course, left their getaway vehicles parked, so there were two bicycles parked there. Two more units came, and I chatted with the officer, I actually sent a picture of that, boy, we called it breaking and entering in law school, but a picture of that boy going into the building, and sent it to you. And I'm mentioning this because that was not part of the agenda packet, and I will tell my neighbors that our police department did apprehend two of the boys, I got a copy of the report, David did not press charges, which is the right thing to do, I think, with teenage kids. But you know, teenage kids are capable of great mischief. It was a teenage kid that killed a pregnant woman and her husband 29 years ago, a 17-year-old boy, a football field away from the police station, not much further than this building. It is a dangerous location, and I continue to be concerned. I want to read one other item to you because, there's a lot of lawyers in the room, and the attractive nuisance doctrine has been beaten up in the state over the years, but...
And you guys like to talk a lot, too.
Yeah, we do. Illinois Pattern Jury Instruction 120.01, which is what's read to a jury in civil case when a kid gets hurt on a building. It says it's the, "Owner of a property in question knew or reasonably should have anticipated the presence of a child or children near a condition on that property which presented a risk of injury which children would not appreciate, and where the expense or inconvenience of remedying the condition is slight compared to the risk. Then the owner has a duty to remedy the condition or protect children from injury resulting from that condition." And you know what, Chris? That didn't happen. After this letter was sent from the developer, that condition wasn't cured. Now, we communicated on Friday, the 2nd of August, I know that the project manager was there, I know he talked to David, I know he talked to Rob Bean, and I appreciate how quickly you guys acted on that, but it's still a dangerous condition, okay? And that's our concern living next door. I believed in this, I spent a lot of time talking with Dave Trandell, I'm very, very sad for him that this has not worked out, but it hasn't worked out. It didn't work out with Nutria Partners. David Trandell has been a real, real good person to talk to and work with, he's not like Nutria Partners were. He tried his best, it hasn't worked, and we're concerned about it next door. And the last thing I want to say, I promise, the village is doing a great job on the Oak Street Bridge, Chris. I got a real good idea of what we're going to hear when the building goes down, the Fell Building goes down, but I echo what Louise said, we need the same kind of protection for our building. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, working back down that row, anybody else in that? I think we're now in the last row of seats. Does anybody in the last row like to come up and share your thoughts with us? Seeing none, we'll move over to this side, the first row has already had their shot. Second row, anybody in the second row like to? Nobody there? Third row? Come on up.
Good evening, my name's Rick Kavanaugh, I'm with SDC Winnetka Investors, which was the original investor in this property in 2013, and still a member of the ownership group that owns the property, not a part of the developer, but part of the membership that owns the property. Was involved pretty intensely for the first two or three years of this process, in meeting with the village, in looking at the original concepts that came out, and looking at some of the damage that was done by Nutria Partners in the process and trying to resolve it. One of the first things that was asked of us when we came in, in 2013, was to look at building 120-car parking garage under Lincoln Avenue for commuters that we could get traffic off the streets in the area. We designed a building at the time and a parking garage underneath, and then about a year and a half later, we're told, "No, we don't want to do the parking garage, it's not financially feasible, we're not going to do that," so we changed the design of the building. That was, that process of going through many of the different things, the height, the architecture, Lucian's changes, the morphing of the retail space, the Connie's property being added after originally being designed, the Phototronics property, the Lincoln Avenue right away, and the negotiations, is a long laborious process. I develop real estate all over the United States, have developed over 45,000 apartment units and several high-rise buildings. Delays unfortunately in construction and entitlements and financing is difficult. As a member of this property, not being involved in the last couple of years in the development side, but being a member of the property, we, the property owner did submit a demolition permit in December of 2016 for this property, and I believe the demolition permit was conditionally approved subject to a submission of a full building permit set for this property. At the time, the members were ready to demolish the properties and get it back to level ground so that we could get rid of the problem that we are now facing as owners of the property and some of the things that have happened. That was not allowed to be done because of the way that the process works here, unfortunately. That was a $450,000 investment that could have been made to make it safe, instead of having to design a building, you get permits for a $100 million property. It's a different financial consideration, a different result from a liability and everything else that goes along with it. We, as members of the ownership group, do understand the liability that goes with buildings like this when they become in disrepair. It's impossible to lease those buildings, it was impossible to lease them four years ago, given the status of where things were and the moving target that we had. So at the end of the day, as a member of the property, as an owner of the property in the village, and having worked a long time on this with David and his group, and seeing this morph and transition, I would ask you to take that into consideration because it has been a give-and-take, it has been a well-negotiated arrangement. I think they are very close to the finish line, from my observation point, I can't guarantee it, but I think they're getting closer. Certainly with the property being acquired for Connie's, which allows the plat to be done, the plat can't be recorded until they move, they can't file a building permit until you have a plat, so you can't get the demolition permit until you get the plat recorded. So there are several pieces that have to happen that today are probably further along than were back in October and December, and you know, and it's unfortunate that in our business, we sometimes make commitments because we're optimists as real estate developers. So I just ask you to consider that in your review. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in that row? Move back to the next row, anybody in the fourth row? And we'll move back to the fifth row, anybody in the fifth row? No takers. Last row of seats, anybody in the last row like to address council? Okay, this is the last call for public comment, would anybody like to add anything at this point in time? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and I will bring it back up here for final deliberations. If any of you have any questions of either Peter or the developer and the development team, you're welcome to fire away and fill in whatever gaps and information you might need.
I have one question for David Trandell. Are you prepared to move forward as project completed per the approved plans and agreements?
Yes, we, there, we went through a laborious design process, and we all signed on for the envelope of the building, so none of that will change. I think, you know, we have explored ways to, you know, our first and foremost objective has been to adhere to the promises we made per the development agreement and the public benefit. So that's the parking spaces for the village, and I think, you know, the market, being the market, I think we probably would like a little flexibility, but we could certainly live with the development as it stands, we're not looking for any major changes that would be outside the envelope of what we all signed on for. But, so, the answer is yes, but if we get, if we get our, the goal, to stay forward, I think, you know, we're going to continue to find, you know, find, do some fine tuning on that. But is there any specific issue?
Well, there's some, a couple of people in the audience brought up the fact that you're now asking for changes in more units, and that is...
Well, I think a couple of things are...
That is not what was approved.
Yeah, I think in the context of what units mean, so, we're not asking for more square footage, I don't, I can't say if it takes, you know, when we started this process, you know, our buyers were younger, I don't know how many buyers remain out there, if our buyers who combined units decide not to go forward, our lender's not going to just let us go build spec 4,000-square-foot units. So what we all agreed to was a unit count that was all tied to a definitive square footage, that doesn't change. And I'm not suggesting we have a plan that says, "We've got to go to 80 units." What I said is that it would be wise, so we don't come back here ever again, is to have some flexibility in the unit count, as long as it adhered to the parking. That is ultimately our denominator, is to make sure we can park, and so the question is, if there's no buyers for units, and the only thing we can do is, you know, cut those in half, instead of 4,000 units, have 2,000, we might need a little wiggle room. I'm not saying that we have to go there, if you tell us we can't, then, you know, we'll live with it, but I think, as long as we're discussing this, I think it's a reality that, you know, let's face it, our, the headwinds that have hit us beyond the time, and it's all well-intended, I mean, no one's sitting, I'm not, I am not pointing a finger at anybody, although our costs are up 35, almost 36 percent, our taxes are up, I mean, life is, life is different than when we started. And, you know, we embarked on a program that was going to be 120 units, all rental, at that time, people said, "Hey, we got to have condos." We had interest in condos, you know, I think collectively, the task would be, listen, if it doesn't change what's been approved from an envelope standpoint, from an aesthetic standpoint, and it gets done, does it, does it, does it matter if it's 72 units or 62 units? I mean, it's just a function of math and financing, so, that is one area I would say would probably, I don't know if that's a substantial change or it's perfunctory, you know, that's just something we could talk about, but I think at the end of the day, we don't want to come back and say, "Jeez, you know, our buyers left." And so now we don't have our pre-sales, because I can only ask gentlemen like Dick Metzler to hang on for so long, and he's got a large unit, but if he chooses to say, "Hey, I'm not going down this path anymore," now I have two units, because he combined two, so now I have two instead of one, and I'm just trying to look forward and say we should have a little understanding, as long as we look at it as square footage, and close leasable and sellable square footage, you know, I think, and the envelope doesn't change, I, you know, I'm just trying to be responsive to what the world is telling us out there, you know?
Thank you, David.
Okay.
Anything on this, anything else on this side? This side?
Quick question for Peter, because there was a comment made, I just want to make sure that my understanding is correct, that we did not receive Exhibit Q.
Yeah, I've checked, I have not received it.
Can I just ask a quick question on the, on the plan that we're actually building, that you're actually building? So you also talked about eliminating the balconies and replacing them with Juliet balconies, is that, because that would be a substantial change in the design, as far as I would understand it?
I think the, well, first of all, we went through a lot of, there's a lot of adverse opinions towards balconies because of what may happen on balconies and what may be on balconies. It is definitely a simplifier, and maybe, but if, and again, it's, these are suggestions, it's not saying, these are, they're not like take or leave it, the unit count's not take or leave it, but I think these are, given what the market's telling us, and maybe... But I think these are, given what the market's telling us and maybe the, what the world's told us, based on the view of the building, that maybe, you know, I mean, Juliet's are, are far more, it's a cleaner look, and we, you know, we're open to it. We thought that would be something well-received. If that's not something that the world wants, we're, we'll live with the balconies. But I, I, you know, that, again, it's a, it's more of a discussion point. If we say we have to live to the document, to the document, you know, we're prepared to go forward. But I just think the unit count is something that, that's really a market issue. You know, there are certain things we take on as risk. As a developer, you do your best guess. Lenders then opine, and they tell you, geez, you know, we're not comfortable financing a 4,000 square foot spec build, uh, unit, which they're not going to do, and they're, they're telling us, okay, we got to design it to make sure it can turn into a two-bedroom instead of a four-bedroom in case no one shows up. So, you know, again, these aren't, these aren't meant to be, I, I always looked at the development agreement as a guide, and it's something we adhere to, but if the market tells us, I mean, what do we do? We just build 4,000 square foot units and keep them empty? I mean, that doesn't make sense either. That's not good for anybody. So that's, that's the only reason I brought up the unit things, to have a little wiggle room. With the Juliet's, the balconies, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's, I thought that would be a kind of a, an accommodation, but...
Thanks, David. Benny, anything? Okay. Bob?
Are we open for some comment or not?
Well, if you want to, if you want to have a last word, I certainly...
I, I would add, um, and I'll just, again, speak for myself here. Just a couple of comments. At least since I've been on the council, there's, there hasn't been a single issue more highly deliberated, both within this room here, as well as on the streets of Winnetka, amongst people in this room and not in this room, that had various opinions and so on. So the thought that this is something that had 20 minutes of deliberation a couple of weeks ago, not the case, not close to being knee-jerk in any sense. It's not personal in any way, shape, or form. This is a, it's a business transaction, and these events of default are, are serious. And so I reject the notion that this is knee-jerk and not well-deliberated, because it has been. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, well, I guess we're at a point, does anybody, anybody care to make a motion one way or another on this?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion. Consider adoption of Resolution Number R 69 2019, terminating the approval documents related to Winnetka development.
You have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Trustee Swerke.
Yes.
Trustee Lantheer.
Yes.
Trustee Wedner.
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn.
Yes.
Trust, trustee Kaladarchi.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. At this point, we'll take a five-minute recess, and we'll reconvene to conduct the remainder of our agenda. Thank you. Okay, folks, I'd like to call the meeting back to order, please. Thank you. Uh, okay, we are, do I have to do anything special to get us out of recess? Okay, we're back in session. One thing I wanted to, uh, mention, that I just found out, that these, that there's a group of scouts here who are working on their, what's the, uh? And you, and I, I told them that they picked one great night to come out and really see how it works here at the Village of Winnetka, so, welcome. Thank you very much. We really, we, we appreciate you coming out, really. It's, I think it's important to learn how this stuff works. I didn't learn until I was 40, so you got to jump on me. All right, so we'll pick up the agenda where we left off. Item B. Ordinance Number MC 7 2019, amending village floodplain regulations. This is up for introduction. By reference, Winnetka has adopted the watershed maintenance ordinance of the MWRD. Recent changes to their ordinance affects Winnetka and necessitates a revision of our floodplain regulations. Here to review is village engineer Steve Saunders, who has taken a course in speed speaking and will have, be finished with this in short order.
Your wish is my command. So several years ago, the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District was given stormwater management authority for Cook County, and one of the tasks they took on was floodplain management. Unfortunately, each of the 168 municipalities in Cook County is required to also manage floodplain regulations as part of the National Flood Insurance Program. And so you can imagine with each community managing floodplain and then the MWRD throwing their ordinance over the top of it, they, they created a pretty unholy marble cake that was really difficult to manage. So their solution frankly is helpful, but it, but it creates a little bit of a bind. When they modified their ordinance in May, they essentially dropped any reference to regulating what are called substantial improvements. A property that's in the floodplain that was sort of pre-existing when the floodplain designation was made, is only allowed to invest up to 50% of the value of that, that building without bringing the whole building into compliance with, with the flood regulations. That, that actually came up earlier tonight. That's one of the issues at 1259 Cherry Street at Cherry and Hibbard. They crossed that threshold, and now they have to bring the building into compliance with the floodplain regulations. Anyhow, when the MWRD amended their ordinance, they, they inadvertently created a loophole in our ordinance, because we tried to sync with, with the MWRD. So we have to modify our ordinance to add back in the definition of substantial improvement so that, that our ordinance is compliant with the federal flood insurance... so that, that our ordinance is compliant with the federal flood insurance regulations. And so ordinance MC seven adds in the word substantial improvement in six or eight locations and essentially reestablishes the way that we've been regulating development in the floodplain up until the ordinance changed by the MWRD. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve on this item?
Wow.
We'll, we'll come to the, I, I actually did have one question. Steve, this, this concept of substantial improvement, now we've defined that completely and have a full understanding of what that means in this marble cake that you're referring to.
Yes, so a substantial improvement is any improvement to a structure that's in the floodplain, the cost of which exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the existing building, and that's cumulative over the life of the structure. So you can do small improvements, and once you hit that threshold, you basically have to then bring the structure into full compliance with, with the floodplain regulations.
So that definition that's been used for years, as far as I can remember, just continues on, but now it's just folded in, okay.
Correct.
Over the lifetime of the building?
Yes.
So like, what if you have a hundred-year-old house?
Well, so it's, it's starting with permits when the, when the floodplain was, was mapped onto that property. So any improvements since nineteen eighty at the earliest?
Okay, all right, okay.
And, and it's market value, not assessed value?
Uh, it's market value, that's correct, of the building exclusive of the land.
Correct.
And that moves also with, with the market, right? I mean...
Yes.
Okay, so even if it's a hundred years old, it keeps, the threshold rises with the value of the property as well. Yeah, or it doesn't float away, one of the two.
And the proof of the value is based on a tax bill somehow?
Uh, there's, there's, so it, it can come from, if there's a recent sale, we'll work with appraisers, we'll work with the assessed value, because they, they assess the value for the building and then the, the land, and then there's a multiplier. So that, we'll, we'll take a look, and whichever one seems to make the most sense is how we do that.
Great, I'll, I'd like to open the microphone up to the public to speak on this item. Would anybody like to speak? Come on up, Leo.
Steve, I built quite a few houses in floodplain with a basement before MWRD took regulation. It was FEMA regulation, it's got full basement. Obviously, it requires special requirements. It's still the same, basically, you cannot build basement in floodplain for your construction.
So the, the floodplain regulations are that, that the lowest habitable floor has to be above the flood elevation. And so essentially, to build a basement in a property that's in the floodplain, you have to bring the property out of the floodplain, get a letter of map amendment, and then once the property is certified out of the floodplain, a basement could be built. So same process as you've gone through on, on several occasions.
Couple of years ago, it changed, like three years ago, it's maximum you can do five feet basement right now. Because when I talked to Steve, he cannot do regular basement. Before I was doing regular full basement, it was no problem before a couple of years ago. Is it right now changed with this one?
No, same, same process.
It's five feet?
Yeah, no, no changes.
It's five feet?
Right.
Leo, I haven't seen you for like eight years, and now see, look at you, you show up and look at all the new stuff you're learning. And I'd sure love to understand your definition of a regular basement one of these days, but that'll be for a whole nother conversation, okay? So anybody else like to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close public comment. Bring it back up for here, any other comments, questions?
It's only for introduction, is it possible to also adopt, or no?
No, just introduction.
Okay.
John wants to get these things off the agenda.
Chop chop.
Okay, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number MC seven twenty nineteen?
Second.
Voice vote? Uh, we have a, a motion and a second. Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we move on. I told you I'd never learn that stuff. Thank you, Steve, thanks for hanging around. Ordinance number M ten twenty nineteen, three fifteen Fairview Public Ale Vacation, Public Hearing and Introduction. A public hearing is scheduled for tonight to discuss a request to vacate a portion of an unimproved alley pursuant to a resident request to purchase the parcel. The hearing will start with a presentation by, a short presentation by Community Development Director David Schoen, and then public comment will be heard. Uh, the public hearing is now open, and I'll turn the microphone over to David.
Uh, yes, so the village has been vacating portions of this alley since about nineteen ninety-seven, so this would be the sixth portion of this alley. Uh, so before you is an ordinance that would approve the vacation and then the platte consolidation to combine the vacated portion of the alley to the applicant's property. Uh, we have agreed upon a price for the alley, and that will, transaction will take part as part of this process. Uh, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
And just to make it clear to the people in the audience, no one is actually going on vacation in an alley. We're selling a chunk of an alley.
Thank you.
I point that out because that's what I thought when I...
He wasn't out here.
What were you eating over there?
He had to speed up and was watching TV. Uh, no other questions for David? Uh, anybody from the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none, is the, the potential purchaser in the room this evening? Hi, how you doing? Great, great, thanks for coming out tonight and sticking around. Uh, okay. Since there's no other comments, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number M ten twenty nineteen? So move. Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next time around, we'll be able to... We'll put it on consent agenda, so you really don't have to come if you don't want to.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming. Okay, we're finally there. Ordinance number M eleven twenty nineteen, twelve Indian Hill Road, Annexation and Map Amendment, Public Hearing and Introduction. A second public hearing was noticed for this evening to discuss a request for an annexation of a parcel currently located in unincorporated Cook County. I now open the public hearing on ordinance number M eleven twenty nineteen. And David is back at the microphone to review.
Uh, so briefly, the property, a portion of it's in the county, a portion of it's in the village. Uh, the portion that's in the village is zoned R two. The property owner would like to annex the unincorporated part into the village and zone it to R two, and so that's what's on the agenda this evening.
Now, they're not subdividing the property, they're, they're, it's still staying a consolidated parcel with, with one buildable lot?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for...
Yeah, what is the, what do you think is the reason for them annexing their one piece?
Uh, just to deal with one governmental entity on the approval process.
Oh, okay.
The representative of the property owners here too.
Oh, great, come on up. Hi.
I'll try to be brief, it's getting a little late. So my name is Joan Ferraro, and I represent Michael and Chloe Chalia with respect to their petition for annexation. The property in question's an empty lot. Two-thirds of that lot is currently in unincorporated Cook County, and a third of it is in the village of Winnetka. And my clients are asking the board to approve the annexation of the portion of the property that's in unincorporated Cook County into the village of Winnetka. Their purpose is they are building a home. Uh, they've already acquired all of the property. Um, it was a subdivided lot that included all of the property, so there was no additional subdivision that was required. The annexation is required to assure that the entire parcel is subject to the Village of Winnetka Development Regulations. And the approval of this council would allow my client to proceed with the planning and construction of their new home, but it would also have, of course, the public benefit of bringing a large piece of property currently in unincorporated Cook County into the tax base of the village of Winnetka. In conclusion, we ask that the board approve the annexation as per the petition that we filed.
Great, well, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions of the petitioner's representative?
Just a brief question, do you know why the property was split between County and Winnetka in the first place?
So there's a great deal of property that was once originally in unincorporated Cook County. This parcel is adjacent to the golf course, uh, and so all the property, one time along that border, was in unincorporated Cook County. And then piece by piece, over the years, property owners have petitioned to incorporate the little pieces that they owned into the village of Winnetka. So it, it, there was no specific rhyme or reason, it was just a section line.
Any other questions?
I, I would ask if there's no objection and no public comment, is it possible to waive introduction and just adopt the, the...
No, it's not on the agenda for adoption, so you can't do that under the Open Meetings Act.
We'll go fast next time, though.
Okay.
It'll be on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Assuming it gets approved today.
Yes. Well, let's find out.
Please, thank you.
May I have a motion to introduce ordinance number M eleven twenty nineteen?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. New business. Uh, comprehensive annual fiscal report. This is, this is what Bob waits for all year.
That's like...
This is it, and look at, he's got like, he's got a whole notebook full of questions.
I left all my questions, so they're sitting on my desk.
Sorry, Ron, I mean, it's a different council than it was a couple of years ago, so I mean, the questions you might get might be a little different than you're used to. The twenty eighteen comprehensive annual financial report, as accountants refer to it as, CAFR?
A CAFR, yes.
Yeah, I wish I'm kind of getting that lingo, lingo. Delivered to the council on July fifth and is available to the public on the village's website. Tonight, the finance director will, will review the results of the twenty eighteen audit and take questions from the council and the public. Tim is here to review, and Ron Ammon is here to backfill any, anything we need from him, too. And I might say, before you start, I did read the, the, both documents, and as usual, excellent work. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, good evening. Uh, I can't be quite as brief as the last two items, but we'll, we'll keep it going.
Oh, yes, you can.
Presented for your review is the village's comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, otherwise known as the audit. Uh, the main point of the audit is to provide the village's financial stakeholders reasonable assurance that financial statements are accurate and complete. The culmination of the audit is the CAFR document itself, which consists of five main sections, including the transmitter letter, the audit letter, the auditor report, sorry, the management discussion and analysis, the basic financials, including the notes, and finally, the statistics section. Uh, Ron Ammon is here from the auditing firm, Roderick and Ammon, and will break down the report later as part of his presentation. Uh, but before turning over to Ron, I did want to point out a few items of note in regards to the two thousand and eighteen audit. Uh, first, I would like to thank the Finance Department for all their hard work in preparing for the audit and keeping the village's finances organized throughout the year. Uh, in particular, I would like to recognize our accounting manager, Dell Duckworth, for her efforts in managing a smooth audit. Thank you, Dell. Uh, next, the CAFR is prepared in accordance to the standards identified in the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Uh, as in years past, we fully expect to continue to win this prestigious award. Uh, also, as part of the audit process, the auditors provide a management letter which documents any findings related to internal controls, and I am happy to report that the two thousand and eighteen audit resulted in zero findings. So there were no deficiencies, no material weaknesses, and no current internal control recommendations identified in the management letter. So we're very proud of that. Uh, moving on now to reviewing some of the major funds identified in the report, starting with the general fund. The general fund is the main operating fund of the village and posted a surplus of one point six million dollars. Uh, this is a result of revenues which came in at almost one hundred percent of budget, while total expenditures were closer to ninety percent of budget, with all departments operating under budget. The key drivers of the one point six million dollar surplus include almost one million dollars in personnel savings, salaries and benefits, due to personnel transitions and lower labor costs related to hiring new staff. Uh, consulting services were down compared to budget, largely driven by costs due to the one Winnetka project that did not materialize. Uh, and also, we budget a three hundred thousand dollar contingency each year, and we did not touch any part of the contingency. So in total, the general fund balance currently stands at twenty-two point three million dollars, or ninety-four percent of operating expenditures. The village's fund balance policy requires a minimum of fifty percent of budgeted operating expenditures. And the general fund balance is unreserved and unassigned, so it might be time to have a future discussion to consider assigning or designating a portion of fund balance elsewhere. Um, so in total, we have ninety-four percent of operating expenditures, our minimum requirement's at fifty percent, so it's, we're, we're doing good there. In regards to the enterprise funds or the utilities, total cash balances in the utility funds increased five point two six percent from twenty-five point three million dollars to twenty-six point six million dollars. Uh, cash positions increased in the water, the sanitary, refuse and stormwater funds, offsetting a small decrease in the electric fund. In terms of capital spending, for the year, capital spending totaled six point four million dollars, which was almost forty-two percent of the budget. Uh, while all major projects were completed in the general fund, virtually all the budgeted items in the stormwater fund were deferred due to ongoing planning within that fund. And finally, in regards to the village's pensions, the results of the latest actuary report show that the funding status of the public safety pension funds, they show a decrease in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the police pension fund currently stands at sixty-four point eight percent, down from sixty-nine point nine percent in two thousand and seventeen. And the fire pension stands at sixty-two point seven percent, down from sixty-five point nine percent in two thousand and seventeen. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to Ron, who is here tonight to present the report in more detail. Can you answer any questions that you may have?
Thanks, Tim, and good evening. Um, two comments I want to make, one, Tim alluded to real briefly, was that certificate of achievement. I think the board needs to know and understand how prestigious and important that award is, as you earned it for December thirty-first of seventeen. As soon as this audit is approved at the board level, it will be presented to the certificate of achievement program again to get reviewed, but it's a very prestigious award, and to continue to earn it, the village should be very proud of that. And then the second part is, my job is to audit the village and talk to you about the auditor's opinion. So once again, the opinion we issued to the Village of Winnetka was a clean or unmodified opinion, which is the highest level, and as I tell everybody, it's the only opinion you want from your auditors. So from there, I can take any questions about the audit, the audit process, or the CAFR itself.
Any questions or comments? I do have one.
Okay, sorry for the bobble.
I do have one. You know, Tim hit on the, the pension. Now, I understand that because of our conservative projections against the marketplace that that's what drives the percentage, the calculated percentage of unfunded liability. Is there, and, and obviously not, otherwise I'm sure you'd use it because that would be the, the gold standard, is, is there any other way to benchmark us against the rest of the world? Because the sense I have every time we study the pensions is that when you equalize it, we're doing far, far better. But because of our conservative investment assumptions, we end up showing a larger unfunded balance than somebody who, let's say, is still projecting a seven, eight, nine percent return, and we're down at, what are we at now?
Six and a quarter.
Six and a quarter.
Yeah.
Which is very much on the low side as far as communities in Illinois.
Right.
I mean, is there a standard that, that somehow balances these out so we can have a realistic conversation on it?
Um, the, the yes or no answer is no.
Great.
It's, it's obviously, as, as you're talking, you know, to dive into that stuff, it, it's very complicated. It's, it's obviously as, as you're talking, you know, to dive into that stuff. It's very complicated. When you take an IMRF fund, those drivers are dictated by state statute. So you could take your plan and, and do comparisons to a lot of other communities, know where you're at and, and how you relate just to other entities. I always tell everybody, your CAFR, you know, our firm does, you know, four hundred audits and a hundred and twenty of them are municipalities. And no two are even remotely the same. And so when you take pension funds and what you have in police and fire, they're unique. And is six and a quarter on the low end? It's on the low end, but we have clients that are lower. You know, and I'm no, you know, crystal ball person to look out there, but when I look at a pension fund, I think there's many drivers that, that the board and then management and, and budgeting that you need to look at. And one is percent funded. And you're in the low to mid sixties on both of them and, you know, I'm an ultra-conservative accountant and, and that's not bad. I don't, wouldn't want my pension plan to be a hundred percent funded. You know, is sixty to seventy percent, it's, it's reasonable and it's fine and it's well within the statewide averages. But then when you say what percent funded you are, there's drivers that do that, that, that affect it. And assumptions that, that you have control over on the police and the fire side. So unfunded liability to me is a component, but as an accountant, I always put that very low on my, my radar because unfunded liability is non-cash. And it's a driver ultimately in your budgeting process of how much the actuary is going to tell you to put into the plan. But it, it's a non-cash transaction that, that is driven by more of the actuarial world than the accounting world. So I think there's those components that balance each other out and, and, you know, I think percent funded is more important than unfunded liability. But I do think it's all important to have, you know, some grasp on where you're at. But I think if you try to compare yourself to other municipalities, I would tell you try not to. Because you're all different.
Right. But it also makes it really hard to have a good conversation, especially with the, with the fear factor surrounding
Correct.
unfunded liability and, and the way that drives a lot of conversations in our budgeting. And we're going to be coming up on this in, in November and, and clearly, those are the sort of decisions we need to make. And, and I'm just searching for some way for us to get a grasp on how well we're doing. Because, you know, the, the mandate, the state mandate is out there looming and we've even self-imposed a shorter time period to, to attain those goals. And when we see a slippage, it just creates a lot of conversation that, that might not necessarily need to take place at the intensity that it does, given the fact that we're, we're... It's nice to hear somebody in the financial world say, eh, you don't want to be a hundred, because I agree with that.
Right.
I mean...
And, and some people, you know, what I can tell you in a, in a really, you know, it's all intertwined and there's lots of pieces that fall into this, but in your audit, one of the, one of the good benefits of some changes that our industry has done is, you know, to you to be able to look in your audit and see what your rate of return is on the police and fire side. And your percent funded is one hundred percent directed towards what happened in your investment over those twelve months. And one decreased by five point six percent and the other decreased by five point zero percent on your rate of return on your investments. And that's one hundred percent driven by something outside of your control by the stock market. And so if you talk about your percent funded went down, it's like, well, you have six and a quarter as your, your target and in one twelve-month period, they both were negative. So...
All right, Bob, it's all yours.
Well, it's not all mine, but I'll take a little piece of it. And on the pensions and, Tim was nice enough to spend a whole bunch of time with me because I know you guys went through this report. It's a fantastic report of information. And we'll start with the pensions. And Ron, so Tim and I spent quite a bit of time talking about the pensions. And he, we sort, he sent me a listing of the rate of return assumptions, the discount rate, if you will, for neighboring communities.
Right.
And on average, you know, for similar communities like us, it's about seven percent. Right, Tim? About seven?
Yeah, it ranges from six point seven five to...
Seven and a quarter, whatever. IMRF, I think, is seven and a quarter. And so IMRF, you know, a good pension system, you know, they're very proud that they're eighty-five percent funded or whatever. They're seven and a quarter percent, to your point, Chris, a little bit. Now, I know you guys all saw this, but on page eighty of the CAFR, it actually shows what our pension liability would be, for instance, for the police fund if we were at seven and a quarter. We were six and a quarter and sixteen million net liability. Is that right, Ron? Am I reading that right?
Yes.
Six sixty million. If we were at seven and a quarter, it'd be a ten point nine million dollar liability. So, you know, now, we are going to have a pension conversation at some point between now and budget, I think. Between now and budget time. And there are other issues, including rate of return, that need to be talked about, you know, in that conversation. But when you look at this, I think our pensions look pretty darn good, particularly compared to comparable communities in the area. So that was one thing that struck me and as long as I'm here and I'll just, and I'll just raise one more topic. You probably all forget, at least according to this report, and this struck me, that somewhere in here, I can't remember where it was, but we budgeted, I guess, a one point three million dollar loss for the refuse fund? Is that right, Tim? Am I looking at that right? Where did I see that? Hang on a second. That's not what we ended up doing, but is that page seven? There we may, yes, on page seven. And Ron, tell me if I'm looking this wrong, because the other thing that Tim and I spent a lot of time on, and I really appreciated Tim's time and getting back to me on this, was the refuse fund, because that's been a continual topic of conversation and adjustment over the last couple of years here. And am I reading that right, Ron, that we budgeted a one point four million dollar loss for two thousand and eighteen?
Not for the refuse funds as I'm looking at it, unless I'm...
Within the utility funds, with the way the CAFR is presented and the way the budget is presented, so in the CAFR, we use full accrual in the utility funds and the way we budget is the modified accrual. So on a modified accrual, we budgeted, you know, net income of about a negative two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Revenue expenditures.
But my only point on this is that this is, this is the accounting presentation, I guess, of that, of that fund. But when you saw it, and Tim did send to me, what we actually did, if we looked at it on apples and apples to regular general fund accounting basis, the refuse fund actually performed better than we expected. You know, made a little money, if you will, versus lost a little money, basically, in the, in the first year of transition of funding the refuse fund.
Correct.
So two thousand and nineteen, no property tax.
Yeah, so in two thousand, so in two thousand and nineteen, the property tax was eliminated in the refuse fund. In two thousand and eighteen, because of the full accrual, there was a property tax receivable in the refuse fund. So we took, on an accounting full accrual basis, we took the hit, so to speak, of not having that one point one million dollars. On a cash flow basis, as we budgeted in two thousand and nineteen, that's when the actual cash flow. So that's why some of the statements look, you know, a little wonky, so to speak, compared to kind of what's happening on a cash flow basis.
Yeah, my point on this is that I think that we should know up here that in year one of transitioning financing of the refuse fund, we were pretty much on an apples-to-apples basis, on budget, maybe a little ahead of budget.
Yes.
And two thousand and nineteen will be the second year in the full self-financing of the refuse fund.
Correct.
And hopefully, we'll, we'll be in the same position. But in conclusion, I, this, this report, I mean, you could, I mean, if you really wanted to spend a lot of time on the numbers and Ron, you could go through this and be really excited like I am. But there's a lot in there that is really very interesting and it's a great report. And again, I would just commend the finance department and thank Tim again for his time in explaining some of this to me because I took a bunch of his time and I appreciate it.
And, and I would, as I said to Ann, I'm, I'm so sorry that I, I actually did read the whole thing and I'm not a numbers person. So I do have some questions and Tim, I'll just touch base with you. So, but thank you very much. Again, I think it speaks to the really strong planning that goes on and the strong, you know, adherence to our budget and, and the conservative assumptions, which I think for our village are really important. And so thanks to everybody who makes that happen because it starts at the top and so, thank you all.
And, and look, it's, it's easy for us to tease those of us who are a little more into the numbers. But the reality of it is, is the reason why we have the luxury of, of, you know, kidding with Bob about, about the way he drills down into this stuff is because we know we have an excellent team. And Ron, since I started serving many years ago, you, you've been the one constant that I've seen over and over and over again. And I've, I've come to understand just, just the sort of quality that your firm brings to this whole exercise. And it lets us sleep at night without having to read the, at least not all of us having to read the hundred and...
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six pages. Although I will say, I touched every single page because I made a, I made a compact with myself. No matter what's in there, I got to at least look at the page. Now, whether I can digest it or not. But, but there's a lot of comfort in knowing the quality of individuals we have working with us day to day. And, and of course, the people that are, you know, charged with the oversight and certifying to us that our folks are on, on, on board. So thank you so much for all your great efforts and, and certainly, you know, this is one of the things that contributes to our outstanding Moody's rating and will continue to contribute to that as we go forward. We need to actually go out and borrow some money someday. So thanks again.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Nope. Thank you and thank you, Bob, for your extra input, which is always good. Thanks.
The only other thing I was gonna, I would add is, aside from showing that the books are balanced, one thing that comes out a little bit when you look at, for example, in the utility funds, you know, some of the, the positive trends are not happening by accident. I'd like to thank Rob for teeing up a number. God, I think we had twenty rate discussions on water. But the thing I think residents need to understand is, we're not just focused on like that end number, is it balanced or not? We're looking way down the road in terms of the village infrastructure needs and we're, we're making the investments to have reliable water supply, which is a big issue these days. And, and it's, it's nice to see that planning work out. And so thanks to Rob and thanks to the whole, whole finance team for, for all the good work.
Great job. Okay. All righty. Thanks again. And are we done? No.
Cleared the room.
There are no appointments, so thank you. You had it. Appointments, none. Closed session. Not another one. And item thirteen, adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn? No? Voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.